Good afternoon. We'd like to welcome you to the Mesa City Council Study Session for the afternoon of October the 16th. All of our council is present. Item one on our agenda for this meeting is to review tonight's agenda for our regular council member, our council meeting. Counsel, I know we went over this just a few days ago, but any questions on anything on the agenda tonight? Mr. Brady, is the agenda intact? Did I hear that there's something that might be coming off?
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
My agenda is just not pulling up. Yes, so Mayor and Counsel, we need to pull two items. I think we talked about this as a possibility, but item three, the liquor license for Jared's Coffee and Tea Gallery, they have withdrawn their application.
That's three E?
Three E, I believe.
Jared's Coffee and Tea, yeah.
Yeah, three E. There you go. Now it's loading up. And then also, item four F, that item will also be, needs to be removed from the agenda. The vendor told us this morning they have to change the name of the vendor, so we'll have to redo that for the award. So we'll bring back that on the November 6th. I think it's just their name change on that one, so.
Okay. So I don't see Lily King in the room. That's because she's in the booth right now, so hopefully Lily is.
We'll get that information.
She's got that because she's reading the agenda tonight. Okay, any other changes to the agenda?
No, Mayor. The only thing I would offer, if council is interested, we've done a little bit of follow-up. I know there's been a lot of discussion about, or feedback that you've received about the drive-throughs, specifically on the CUP, and there was some statements made or some presentation about that we're going to be so much different than other communities. We have once again surveyed the other communities regarding the drive-through use and the different land use requirements, and so we have just a brief number of slides, kind of five slides, just to show you how we compare with other cities who either require a permit or actually outright prohibited. I think we're being accused of going too far, I think, for once, because today Mesa's probably been most liberal in this area. So if you don't mind, Mary could show those real quickly.
Okay. Thank you. This is on the agenda, on the consent agenda, but we already know we have several blue cards, so this will, there will be, we'll be voting on this separately upstairs.
We wanted to put together a couple of slides just to clarify how the CUP would be implemented if the ordinance is passed tonight. First thing we wanted to do is clarify the waiver process, because I think there might be some misunderstanding of how this works. So any property owner would have three years from the ordinance effective date to submit a waiver from that CUP requirement. So if today you're in the LI district, you could apply for that waiver within three years, and then you would have, you would not have to go through that CUP process. The property would be allowed to develop without that CUP unless it was rezoned, and it's important to note that that waiver goes with the land if that property is sold. So that waiver stays in effect even if the property is sold. The only time it goes away is if it's rezoned. The required information for the waiver, it's not, because it's not a discretionary action, is basically this, and these words come right out of Prop. 207, which I think Jim could probably speak to if you have any specific questions. The three pieces of information we need is the specific amount of just compensation, the statement that the rights to use, divide, sell, or possess, and that the fair market value of the owner's specific parcel were reduced when the, when this ordinance was adopted, and then evidence of ownership on the effective date of the ordinance. And again, this is not discretionary. Those three pieces of information come in, we process it in our GIA system, we flag these lots, so that we know that they don't have to go through the CUP process.
So again, three years, someone has one of these properties today, they can come in on the last day and still retain this process without the CUP.
Mr. Brady, that's correct.
Okay. And then the other question had to do a lot of, go ahead, to the comparison of other cities, that we were going to be out of alignment with that. I think we wanted to show that actually we think we're being still pretty generous in what we allow for drive-throughs. Go ahead.
So we looked at, again, Gilbert, Chandler, Scottsdale, and Mesa, and we identified those parts of the city where drive-throughs were permitted, and those are in the green at the top. Those that require use permit, those are the yellow areas, again, with the percentage of land in each of the jurisdictions. And then what we did was we added where they're not permitted, or where they're prohibited. And so you can see from this listing, Gilbert, that they're not permitted, or they are prohibited in neighborhood office, general office, the gateway village center, business parks, light industrial, general industrial, and then the mixed use, small, large, and regional. In Chandler, again, same information, but this shows that they're not permitted in the planned commercial office or the city center, and you'll notice that a use permit is required in the planned industrial and the general industrial. As it relates to Scottsdale, a use permit is required in the industrial park, but they're not permitted in the commercial office, the planned convenience center, the supportive retail, highway commercial, general commercial, service residential, downtown, the planned airport, air park core, the industrial park, or the light employment. So those were the slides we wanted to bring, just to clarify where the drive-throughs are prohibited in those other districts, or in those other jurisdictions.
Thanks, Mary. Mary, that was just, we just wanted to share that because a lot of conversation, we, when we came back the second time with the billboard proposed changes, we spent a lot of time trying to be careful that we were very similar, as much as possible, with our surrounding communities, so we wouldn't be accused of going far out from where they were. And I think we've tried to achieve that, to the most part, as well as taking input from the council on very specific issues regarding traffic circulation and noise. So anyway, that's kind of, we just wanted to provide that backup that we didn't have before. I think the registry is hugely important. We wanted to acknowledge that. We recognize the Prop. 207, and we tried, we wanted to create a way for that to make it simple and easy for developers to come in and register their property. And as Mary said, once they do that, it's in, for that, it's on the land, so even if the owner changes, that continues with the land.
That's correct.
I know we all have a lot to say about this.
You just, you said billboard, and you, you.
Did I say billboard?
You did, you meant drive-throughs.
You were talking about drive-throughs.
I'm jumping to the next.
No, I just wanted to be very clear. You were talking about drive-throughs because you said billboard. Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Jumped the gun, sorry. I've got stuff to say about this. I'm sure we could all, you know, take 10 minutes each to talk about this. And I'm not saying let's not, but I don't want to say it twice, so.
Now I kind of want to talk.
Thank you for the updated slides, and this will be, this will be a great discussion upstairs. Counsel, anything else before we move on to this agenda to talk about upstairs' agenda? Okay, thank you. Moving on then, item 2A is a presentation on the council use permit and proposed rezoning for the Grand Hotel to allow a social service use. Lindsay Belinky, good to have you with us.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having me. All right, good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Lindsay Belinky. I oversee our Office of Home Solutions as the Deputy Director of Community Services, and I am here tonight to talk about the council use permit for 6733 East Main Street, which, as you know, is the current Grand Hotel. So just as a reference point, we did provide a map here. This is showing our 500-foot radius, as well as our 1,000-foot radius. The location is just west of Power on Main Street, and as you can see, as outlined in the, in the radial map, there are red properties that are showing our commercial properties, and then the yellow and orange are showing residential. There is a neighborhood to the south of the hotel, which is registered as the Desert Wells Two Neighborhood. And then we also have an HOA on the top right corner of that map, which is Las Palmas, which is a 55-plus HOA community. And as you can see, there's, there's commercial as well. We do have a tire shop next to the property, as well as an RV repair shop nearby. This property was built in both 1977, as well as 1985. There are 70 rooms in the property. You can see on the right side, there is a two-story building that is a 60-room property, and then the lower level, one-story building, has 10 rooms in it, for a total of 70. And the total property is 1.34 acres. So as part of our proposal in purchasing this property, we are coming to you with a council use permit request, and that is to change this property use from a hotel, as it is today, to a social service use, and this is specifically for the Off the Streets program, for a longer-term solution for that program. And within our proposal, within the council use permit, we are proposing to have a limited use for that temporary housing program. That would be limited to serving seniors, families, and domestic violence victims. And we would have that within our Good Neighbor policy. We do have a Good Neighbor report, and we would ask that that's a stipulation that's attached to council's approval. I also wanted to share with you tonight some of the improvements we have planned for this property, should we receive the cup. There are many public safety improvements that we have planned, and so they are outlined here. You can see in the photo, at the top of the property is Main Street, and as it sits today, you can drive into that parking lot and then back out onto the residential, into the residential neighborhood, onto Alder Avenue. So there is an access point on that parking lot as well, and then there's another entry point and exit on Sun Air. So as part of our proposal, we are hoping to limit both of those access points and make Main Street our main entry and exit, just to have better control of the property for safety measures, and for improvements to just the flow of our program, and to support our Good Neighbor policy. And I will show you some, some images of what we anticipate that to look like. We are also making upgrades to lighting where needed, just to have a well-lit property internally within the property, as well as cameras. So the cameras are really meant to add quality to our program control, our control of the campus. They are also, they would also be tied into the Real-Time Crime Center and be an asset to our police department as well. And then we would have that dedicated police presence on-site, which would be 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and we would anticipate that to be visualized with a police car parked out front, to be very visible, whether you see the officer walking on property, or the car parked there. That person is, you know, walking the campus, very interactive with the clients there, as well as the staff working on-site, and an asset to the neighborhood. This is showing the backside of the property, the south side, from Alder Street, so this is looking towards, out towards Main Street. And as you can see here, there is a wrought iron fence. That opening to the parking lot is very open as of right now. What we would like to propose is an eight-foot block wall that goes, it wraps around here at the back of the property, and on to Sun Air further around the property, and we would plan to add these gates as well. So solid gates that would remain closed 100% of the time unless there's a need for a solid waste truck, or a fire truck, or something bigger of that nature that needs access. Otherwise, those would remain closed. No clients would have access to open or close the gates, and very limited staff would have access to do that. You also will notice there are many palm trees on the property, and I'll, I'll show you our plan for that in a moment. This is the east side of the property from Sun Air. Again, we would plan to have that wall wrap around to this location, and a similar gate at this location that would remain closed and act more as a wall than a gate the majority of the time. Again, those palm trees, which will be going away as part of our plan. In addition to public safety improvements, there are many service enhancements that we're looking at. As you recall, a large percentage of our clients served do have physical disabilities, and so we're really looking at ADA ramps and walkways. This photo is showing the back of the property of the hotel, the two-story building, and so, as you can imagine, a wheelchair or someone with a walker would not be able to access this entry point, and so we are proposing an ADA ramp right here, as well as several improvements to the walkways internally on the property. We are also planning to accommodate many children at this location with all the families that we serve, and so you can see the proposed play area right now is a former swimming pool that's been filled in with concrete. We are planning to turn this into a shaded play structure, just a family-friendly area where our kids can have an outdoor fun place to play. And then, as one of our best practices, we do keep, try to keep our clients with their pets. It just helps for improvement, their progress through, through the program, and is a best practice within this work regionally and nationally. This area is off of Main Street, right here on the front corner of the property, where we would plan to have it look more dog-friendly, remove some of those cactus, and make it more dog-friendly for those clients that do have pets on property. This is a rendering of what we hope to have the property look like after we've had, have some time to make improvements. This is looking at the property from Main Street and Sun Air. You can see the Main Street entrance is right there, and that red awning is the entrance to the two-story building. That would be our main entrance there. And as you can see here, all of those palm trees have disappeared, and we've, we've replaced them with a lot of shade trees. We want shade with, on the property, within the property, to accommodate some of those common areas where we have people outside on the property. But we also want to add shade to the neighborhood and just the aesthetics of the neighborhood. The second rendering shows the backside of the property from Alder, and so you can see we've added some shade trees to the interior of that, of that new wall, as well as to the exterior, so that we are adding to that Good Neighbor plan and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. We're adding a lot of desert-friendly plants and trees throughout the property. So throughout this process, we have had a lot of community engagement. As you are likely aware, we did have three community meetings, and just tried to make them very accessible, and have them in various mediums. So we had some in-person meetings, as well as a virtual meeting for those that maybe weren't in town, but could attend virtually. We also provided a lot of outreach within the neighborhood. We had three rounds of door-to-door visits and discussions with area residents, so a lot of knocking on doors, sharing information, handing out information, meeting reminders, and program updates in various mediums that are shown on the slide here. We also learned early on that there were many Spanish-speaking residents within the neighborhood behind the hotel, and so we provided all of our, our meetings. We had translation and interpretation to accommodate those residents. We also had many different other meetings, other than those three public meetings by request. If anybody wanted us to come out and meet with them, we accommodated all of those requests, and responded to the many calls and emails that were received at the city. And then we also provided some Q and A for all the questions that we, we received at meetings. We were able to provide that on our website as well. Yes, okay. So we do have our Good Neighbor policy, and before going into that, you know, I know you all have received probably many phone calls and emails. We received many and documented all of those, and really had a strong mix of feedback from the community. Overall, the sentiment was that citywide, people generally want homelessness to be addressed. They recognize it as a serious issue that's important, and they, they want it to be addressed. How that is done has varying opinions, as you know, but we really heard a lot of positive feedback about the program. We had a lot of questions and concerns as well, questions about, you know, what, what, how the neighborhood currently exists. There was a lot of questions about public safety and concerns about what people are seeing in the neighborhood right now and in the surrounding community. People expressed concerns about their, their own safety, how things are addressed, when they report them, drug use that they're seeing visually in their neighborhood. So there was a lot of concern about that, and we, we took a lot, we have made a lot of efforts to have our police department with us whenever we're having these meetings. They've had a lot of meetings of their own as well. Commander Entieri has given out his, his cell phone number, and just been very accessible, along with all of the community action officers, to truly, really try to take a look at what is happening right now, and how can we address those issues right now. We also had a lot of, of people saying, you know, we could see value of having this come to our neighborhood. So again, a lot of it was mixed, and we tried to take any constructive feedback that we could, and pour it into our response and our Good Neighbor policy. Our Good Neighbor policy really focuses on a strong program. And so what you see here are our, our main features that we have for that policy, which are dedicated, that dedicated police officer on-site 24/7, as well as our nonprofit partner, which is currently Community Bridges. They provide the case management and onsite oversight, which is around the clock as well. We are also continuing to, in, in our response to the neighborhood, having that limited service to, to those specific clientele, which are families, seniors, and domestic violence victims. We do not allow drop-up, walk-up or drop-in services, and do not allow that on, on campus anywhere, so it is very much a referral-based program. The room checks to ensure safety, program compliance, compliance and client support, as well as the curfew that is enforced at 10:00 PM, and no visitors allowed on campus without permission and monitoring if that is occurring. Also, many off-campus wraparound services, so this is not a place to get everything that you need, but it is a place to get very connected to those needs, and then oftentimes transported off-site, which could be services that are located citywide. Our Good Neighbor policy also focuses on, focuses on a stronger neighborhood, and so we have created a Good Neighbor policy report that is actually attached to documentation for the council meeting tonight. So anyone listening in that wants to pull that up, it is available publicly for people to take a look at, if you go to the agenda for tonight's city council meeting. And within that, it includes a commitment to a stronger neighborhood to the surrounding area. Again, we believe that dedicated police officer on-site 24/7 really helps connect the neighborhood to a stronger and safer place to be, and adds value to that neighborhood. We are committed to having a clean and well-maintained campus, enhancing lighting and safety and supports on, on to our property, as well as a dedicated phone number and email provided to the surrounding community, so that they can really connect with us right away if they have any concern. I really monitor those types of calls and feedback. We take that very seriously, and work in collaboration with our police department, in collaboration with CBI, and can have very constructive conversations and address any questions or concerns that are coming in. We are also doing proactive homelessness outreach right now in the area, so whenever, you know, we're looking at that area, we're looking at, you know, what, what exists right now, and how can we address any homelessness that is in that area right now. So there's been proactive measures there with our police department, as well as our outreach teams that we work with. The neighborhood is also really receiving an influx of just us looking at any existing city services and how we can bring them into the neighborhood. That would include cleanup, cleanup dumpsters, registering. We, the neighborhood was registered, but we, they no longer had a registered leader, so we were able to establish a registered leader through this process, and just reconnect in that way with our community engagement team, and also with our police engagement. We're also excited to say we've done a comprehensive safety amenity and amenity review, and that's still underway. But one successful outcome of that has been that we were able to look at the new streetlights with RJ's team, and we really were, they were able to determine that it is a darker neighborhood. I see you squinting, Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, so this is the map of the streetlights. The blue arrows, or those, those fuzzy blue dots that you might see, are existing lights. And what we first did is transportation went in, and we replaced all those bulbs with new LED bulbs, and, and made that upgrade. And then they did an additional assessment to, there was lots of conversation about, you know, having dark streets. We saw that ourselves, driving through the neighborhood at times. And so these red dots, those are the bigger fuzzy circles that you might see, are the new, the proposed locations for the new lights, and that would be nine new lights for the neighborhood. In addition to that, there's also been an assessment of the streets, and a slurry seal has been approved for those streets there, which I'm told is, is a great value add, and improves the riding surface on each of those streets. So finally, just in review, we really, we do feel this provides a, a great local solution to some of our homelessness challenges. We have an existing program that has demonstrated success and strong partnerships. We believe the East Valley Mesa, or the East Mesa location helps to spread services citywide, and respond to a lot of the feedback that we've received previously from both the council and the community about spreading services. This is a service tool for our first responders to be able to lead with services and have a place for people that they're encountering in the community to go. Having ownership of the property really allows Mesa to control the quality of the program and the property, supports the program continuation. We can determine the population served there and have control of that, and really determine the property sale and transfer if we decide to do that into the future. Federal funding supports a longer-term stability and just makes a great use of that unique opportunity that we have currently with that funding, and provides ongoing cost savings and cost avoidance. We also feel that the Good Neighbor commitments really help to support a stronger program and a stronger neighborhood. This is a review of our timeline. We have our, our community engagement listed on there, which occurred over the summer of 2023. We did go to planning and zoning and received recommendations in September of 2023, and on November 6th, we plan to come to you for, for your consideration as well in the process. And if that is approved by council in late November, the property purchase would be completed, and early to mid 2024, we would continue with design, design completion and property improvements to begin. And that concludes the presentation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Thank you, Lindsay. Counsel, any questions for Lindsay? All right, I think you said it all, Lindsay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So again, this is on our agenda upstairs for introduction, and then the vote will be November the 6th. All right. Thank you very much. Next item on our agenda, item 2A, is a presentation on allowing new billboards in Mesa.
Welcome, Mary and Rachel.
Mayor Giles, council members. This evening, we're going to present on off-premise signs and billboards, and some direction that the city council may want to consider moving forward. So why are we bringing this to the city council at this, whoops, I just lost my presentation, at this point? So we'll start with, what is an off-premise sign? They're often known as billboards. Today, most of those are electronic, and you'll see those in, in other jurisdictions, or it's off-site advertising. That is, that the information on the sign is not about a business, or a product, or service that's offered on the site where that sign is located. The proposed, any proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance, there's really two purposes for that. The first is to create opportunities for development or redevelopment of some larger sites here in the city of Mesa, to develop partnerships with private organizations, so that messaging on city activities, public service announcements, those types of things would, would be available on those, those digital billboards. And the second is to develop the standards to enhance our city's built environment and its [inaudible]. the standards, to enhance our city's built environment and to respond to the market. We did a comparison with other jurisdictions to do some benchmarking. And what you'll see from this is, in many cities, billboards are prohibited. So they're prohibited in Chandler, Gilbert, Scottsdale, Queen Creek, and Apache Junction. They are permitted with different design standards in Maricopa County, Pinal County, Surprise, Glendale, Tempe, and Phoenix. What we're presenting today is some concepts for city council consideration, and we use Maricopa County as a guide for these recommendations as it's related to site eligibility, locational standards, number and size standards, and the digital display standards. So if we start with the proposed site eligibility, the recommended zoning districts that city council may want to consider is to allow them in the public semi-public, the mixed-use, and the infill development district two, or the ID two. You can see from this map, there are two sites currently on the west side of the city that would, given the criteria that we'll be talking about now, where the billboards might be allowed. The site would need to be 50 acres or more, and they'd have to have a freeway frontage of 1,500 feet. As it relates to locational standards, they would have to be placed within 250 feet of the freeway. They'd have to be set back from residential zones or uses, 500 feet. They would have to be separated from other billboards 1,500 feet. And this would include not only billboards in Mesa, but billboards in adjacent communities, because we don't want a proliferation of these. And it would include billboards that are existing or proposed. They would also have to separate 1,500 feet from any existing or proposed freeway landmark sign. When we look at the number and the size standards for the billboards, we're looking at a maximum of two billboards per site with a maximum sign area of 672 square feet, plus 20% for any embellishment. And that might be a motorcycle if it's a Harley-Davidson sign that they were putting up. So there'd be that 20%. The maximum height would be 48 feet above the adjacent freeway grade. It would, and that would include all embellishments and attachments, but it could be no more than 70 feet above the site's finish grade. For the digital display standards, the property owner would be required to allow network time for federal, state, and local, local public service announcements. There would be no animation, flashing, blinking, or moving lights, so we don't cause any distractions for traffic. The display would not change any sooner than every eight seconds. No transition, fading, those types of things would be allowed between the copy and the messages. There would be dimmers on all digital billboards from sunset to 11:00 PM, and that's a maximum of 300 nits. That's how they measure light coming out of a video type of transmission. And all illumination would have to be extinguished from 11:00 PM to sunrise to protect the night sky. The recommended process for council to consider would be to create a billboard overlay district. That would mean that the city council would have that legislative approval, so they could say yes or no, because it would be a legislative act of rezoning that would give them discretion on each and every case. There could also be a potential sunset on the ordinance if council so desired, that in, say, five, 10, 15 years, the ordinance would sunset and no more billboards would be allowed. A development agreement would be required that would require those public service announcement content. It would be with the property owner, with the billboard owner being a party to that, to ensure that those public service announcements were to occur on the billboards. The way we have put the standards together, there are a few properties that could be impacted if the city council wanted to move forward with something like this. And we would, our next step would be to do that outreach with those impacted property owners. And that's what we have on billboards.
Thank you, Mary. Counsel, questions? Mr. Heredia?
I'll just make a comment. As far as the, we see billboards on, there's a couple on the 60, on the, as you turn to the 24, those are county billboards, correct?
Uh, Mayor--
It seemed like it's Mesa, but I think, I think folks, folks, I think, don't know, maybe it's county, county land there.
Mayor Darius Vice Mayor Heredia, that's correct. We actually, both Planning and the City Attorney's Office did a little bit of research on some of the billboards we see around Mesa, and they are on county land mostly.
Okay, okay. And then I think this was a discussion, I think we had a couple of years ago with the owners, potential owners of the Fiesta Mall and I think Mesa Community College, which has led to, all right, let's see how, if doable, how can we mimic, you know, what the county or some other municipalities are doing around billboards. So I think that's kind of the, the information behind the scenes of what conversation has been years in the making as far as this potential development around billboards. So just wanted to comment on that end.
Ms. Spillsbury?
So that's actually what I was going to ask, was what prompted this. So on slide eight, there's just those little squares at MCC and Fiesta Mall. So is that, are those the only two spots we're looking at?
Mayor Giles, Councilmember Spillsbury, based on the criteria that I just went through, those are the only two properties that would meet all of those criteria.
What's that one, Rachel?
She's going to turn those off. Those are others.
Yeah, so, Mayor, Councilwoman Spillsbury, so we did an analysis based on the other criteria about the size and the frontage that you would need. So we have looked at what other districts might qualify if they were to rezone to one of those districts. So this map shows kind of more of the potential sites if they were either to annex or to be rezoned to one of those three zoning districts that--
Well, it only qualifies them as their size.
Right, currently.
But not the current zoning.
Right.
So if you take size and the criteria under the zoning, it's only Fiesta Mall and MCC.
Okay, okay.
I can kind of speak to what prompted this as well, because Mr. Heredia and I have been in meetings with the owners of Fiesta Mall about the possible redevelopment of that site. And the first issue on the agenda when we have those meetings is we have to have, we have to have digital billboards on this site for us, for this to be lucrative enough for us to undertake, you know, developing this piece of property. And today, on my way out to Gateway for a ribbon cutting, I'd noticed, generally, I think we all know, generally speaking, we don't, billboards are non-conforming use. If they're in Mesa, it's because they're there, they were there before the city passed a law that says we don't want billboards. But when you drive on our freeways, you wouldn't know that, because as property has developed after that time, smart real estate developers make sure that they entitle billboards before they annex into the city, or they leave, they carve out a place along the freeway. So really, when you drive through Mesa, that's not, I don't think discernibly much different than other parts of the valley, because this is, these are very lucrative, it's a lucrative business to be in, and so developers have gotten around that. So I think if we were to do this, it wouldn't be, oh my gosh, something changed in Mesa. I mean, the billboards are there already. And so I think, why would we do this? Well, I think it would assist with the redevelopment of Fiesta Mall, which I think is a priority for many or all of us. Next, you would be difficult to do it at Fiesta Mall and then look at Mesa Community College, which is the same size or larger and situated very much, you know, in a similar fashion to Fiesta Mall, and has significant financial needs. We've all, we all think Mesa Community College could be the answer to a lot of the challenges that we face in our city. And so the Mesa College Promise and other things, we, I spend frankly, a lot of time raising money for the Mesa College Promise. And it's kind of a, it's gone really well. But if there were, you know, a billboard kicking out $800,000 a year into the Mesa Community College College Fund, that would, that would be a big deal. That would, you know, we wouldn't have to worry about how low-income kids are going to go to college in Mesa anymore. So for those reasons, I think this is worth discussing.
Mr. Freeman?
So on slide eight, there's a bullet point, infill development district two. What, explain that to me. Did that, did you already answer that question?
Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, I haven't answered that question. I'll let Rachel talk about the infill development district two. It's what the Fiesta Mall site is looking to rezone into. So I'll let Rachel talk about what that zone means.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, so the infill development districts, we have two of them. So we have the district one and two, and they're different because of the size requirements of those. And with the larger district, which is the development district two, they have a little bit more discretion in what they can do within those districts. So basically, they can create their own development standards and establish their own set of permitted uses within those districts to help that site redevelop.
Okay. For a second there, I thought it was Councilmember Spillsbury's district.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that explanation.
Different district. I didn't know that either.
So I think the, actually, I've gotten emails from my constituents in D1 about the brightness, the LED of billboards, even though it's on a county island close on Country Club on the Red Mountain 202 freeway. And I thought, you know, that needs to be addressed, because I'm thinking, well, we have no control over it. Like has been said, they think that Mesa controls those billboards, which they were county islands in which. So I think, you know, to the mayor's point, I think having, you know, a billboard there for that use is appropriate. And if they meet the criteria, I don't see any reason why not to move forward. I was thinking, why are we doing this for two property owners? But I get it. And for Mesa Promise and other activities there. So with that, thank you.
Counsel, any other discussion on this item? All right, thank you. This is just a first floating of the--
Yeah, we just started before we go in, we now need to go, the property owners we've been talking to, we want to go specifically with what we're proposing, want to get, have the council. So we need to go talk to the two different property owners to see how these criteria fit with their expectations, and then come back and have that conversation. So we want to kick it off this way first.
Great.
So thank you.
Thank you for your work on it. Next item on our agenda is item three, current events and conferences attended. Councilmembers, you have anything you'd like to share with us? Ms. Spillsbury?
I just wanted to, just, I finished my Flynn Brown Fellowship on Friday.
Congratulations.
It's been for the last three months. And I mostly just wanted to thank all my colleagues for allowing me to be gone a few times. But also, I cannot believe how many times the city of Mesa was shouted out in that program. So it's 28 people that they pick from across the state. It's a statewide leadership program. It's kind of a big deal. I didn't realize how big of a deal it was till I was in it, and I feel honored that I got to be in it. But I was so proud. I was the only person from Mesa. And we got shouted out for education and workforce initiatives, water, homeless hotel, community court program, broadband initiatives, mental health crisis teams, and more. Like almost every day, we would talk about a different issue for eight or nine hours, and then the next day, we would talk about a different issue. And almost every day, Mesa got brought up. And I just felt so proud to be from Mesa. And I just wanted everyone, in case you weren't aware, to know that there are amazing things happening in the city of Mesa. And I just couldn't be more grateful to be part of this incredible work that everyone's doing. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Spillsbury. And we need more Mesa people to be in Flynn Brown, don't we? So if, hopefully, people have questions, they can reach out to Ms. Spillsbury. She can talk to them about that. Other events? Councilmember Doc?
Yes, this morning, some of us were at a ribbon cutting for Second Avenue Commons. It's a new courtyard apartments complex on Second Avenue and McDonald's. So we're so happy to have them in the community and party the density that we're building in downtown. So we're going to have an amenity bridge downtown for people living here day in and day out, and much more to offer to the city in a larger concept. And also, we didn't just all share the same memo. We're all in purple today because we did a picture. But Thursday evening, at the plaza at Mesa City Center, right here in downtown Mesa, it's domestic awareness at night. And there will be speakers and companies and nonprofits and bringing awareness around domestic violence. So please come out and participate. It's a very moving event. It's very nice, and I invite everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I'd like to recognize Ms. Kim Van Riper. Kim, raise your hand. She's shadowing me today in District One from the Mesa Leadership Program, so I appreciate that. And then on top of that, I just want everybody to be aware, we're going to have a free barbecue this Wednesday at the Mesa Historical Museum from 5 to whenever you want to leave. So I mean, as long as there are food, but more importantly, they have some great exhibits down there that you need to be engaged in and all that. You know, there's another museum a little further north, and they're the caretakers of all the Mesa historical records, if you don't know that. So you're invited to come. It's the easiest address, 2345 North Horn. So if you're good with numbers, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman.
I also like to bring up on Wednesday morning is coffee with a cop at the Food City at Mesa Drive and Southern. So please come out, and we'll all be stopping in, as well as we have our police officers there and just, just have a coffee and chat and just get together. So please come out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, counsel? Yes?
Sure, I'd just like to say I attended Celebrate Mesa this weekend along with a couple others, and it was a fabulous event. And I wanted to thank all the city departments that were involved in putting that on. That's a, that's a big endeavor, and it was fantastic. Everybody looked like they were having a great time, so.
Thank you for saying that.
Can I add to that? Councilmember Goforth and I got to throw T-shirts off the stage. It was awesome. And again, I mean, staff and the participation and the community came out. It was phenomenal. I think it's the largest event, right, that you have, Mr. Brady?
It's got to be real close. It's a big event.
Dia de los Muertos is bigger.
I know, there's like 10,000 people there.
More than that at Dia de los Muertos.
Okay, so it's comfortable.
But it's big, yeah.
But yeah, thank you for showcasing our city. That's awesome.
Great event.
Thank you. On Friday, I had the privilege to go to the Mesa Art Center and welcome the Phoenix Symphony Orchestra, which has had a wonderful performance. And it's not a one-and-done thing. There's a series, Friday nights in Mesa. And the Phoenix Symphony Orchestra will be, I think they have four more performances scattered over the next handful of months on Friday nights. They look, all of the performances look very good. And it was wonderful to see the Phoenix, I had a great conversation with the conductor, and he said, this is the best venue in the state of Arizona, and we are so glad to be here.
Don't tell Phoenix it's spent millions of dollars on that symphony hall.
Hopefully, Channel 11 doesn't, you know, go outside of our bounds. But I thought that was, that's a great opportunity for a great relationship with a premier performing arts group in our, in our city. And I have already bought my tickets. Also, in addition to those Friday night events, December the 15th, they're performing, you know, in a Christmas around the corner, Handel's Messiah.
They do an amazing job. They do an amazing job.
Yeah, that's, we've already got our tickets to that. So if that's a piece of music that you enjoy and you think you would add to your Christmas celebrations, that's December the 15th, and I think the tickets are selling pretty fast. Also, Friday, was honored to speak at the graduation of Police Academy Class Number 55, a large, diverse class of wonderful people that are going to make great police officers. So appreciate them and their families and the sacrifice that they're making to make that, to serve public, to serve the public that way. So that was my Friday night. Anything else, counsel?
All right, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, we do have a council, or we have a study session this Thursday, October 19th, at 7:30 in the morning. As we were, we've mentioned, we'll probably talk about it again, Dia de los Muertos Festival is Saturday, October 21st, and Sunday, October 22nd, at the Mesa Art Center from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. And during that, on that same Saturday, the 21st, will be free admission at the Museum of Natural History from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM. So invite everybody out to that. And just a reminder again, that we will have our council study session for the 24, no, sorry. We're inviting the council to the post on October 24th, the Tuesday, to just come and be, have lunch with us and tour the post. And then the formal opening of the post will actually-- And then the formal opening of the post will actually be November 2nd for the whole community at 10:30 AM. This is your sneak preview on October 24th at 11:30 AM. So we'll get that invitation out to you then. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council, if there's nothing else, that concludes our agenda for this meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Mr. Summers. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.